Need to have more programs like this. For the kids to have these kind of opportunities is just no comparison. We get all walks of life. You've got people that actually are in college that maybe get able to get to a bigger, a higher level. You have people that are not in college that actually gets in because of this program. It's something that they need all of us to meet in.
It's a good thing for all of the communities because you've got some real competition out here. You've got a lot of dudes that's upscale and in basketball talent.
These are the kind of things that we try to provide and have these young men come together and have a good time.
The city's emergency management department is making sure a new generation is prepared. At its Camp Ready L.A., young Angelenos got insight into emergency response procedures and the opportunity to check out careers in the field.
We're here at the City of Los Angeles Emergency Operations Center, and this week is our fourth annual Camp Ready L.A. Week in the City of L.A. So Camp Ready L.A. is a week-long program that we facilitate here at the Emergency Management Department. It's designed to expose 18- to 24-year-olds about the profession of emergency management and other public safety sectors and disciplines. The campers go through a number of different activities over the course of the week that will familiarize them with the emergency management planning topics, emergency response procedures like fire extinguishers and first aid, and ultimately, they'll leave at the end of the week with a better skill set and familiarization with the emergency management profession.
I've enjoyed learning more about emergency management, about CRT, the Crisis Response Team. I didn't know that existed, especially here in Los Angeles. We had a course on the bleed-out. We put out a fire. We learned how to use a fire extinguisher. Just very interesting, very rewarding.
I wanted to know how else the City of L.A., like all of them, help each other out. I wasn't too familiar with all of that, so I wanted to get a deeper understanding of what goes on behind the scenes. We also have just been talking about what the Emergency Operations Center does and how it helps out the community. And there's just so much that I'm learning about that I didn't know about before.
Actually have a better idea of all the different things that city employees do. I mean, it's not just like the things you see with, you know, LAFD, LAPD. Like, there's people like in the background, and so it's really exciting to see.
So I actually started as a camper here. I was a participant of the Camp Ready L.A. program. And from there, I got interested in emergency management. And I applied to be a fellow here at the Emergency Management Department. When I was a camper, I was just interested in what emergency management could be. And now that I have the experience doing Emergency Operations Center activations, I know what it's like to be behind the scenes and actually help the community. And I think that's what's the most rewarding about this.
I would definitely recommend any student, high school, I think it's 18 to 24, anybody in the age range that qualifies or that could take this program, to definitely apply and do this program. It definitely opens up a lot of doors. You get to meet a lot of people. I've met a lot of great people here so far. Even if you're not entirely sure what you want to do, or if you're studying something unrelated, this is great to kind of just get your foot in the door and kind of really start that, like, next part of adult life.
We caught up with the Office of L.A. City Attorney Heidi Felstein Soto. The team are meeting with seniors to connect them with available resources and get feedback on services they would like to see in their neighborhood.
The City Attorney's Office is... Today, we are here in Council District 10, specifically at Jim Gillian Park. And we are meeting with our seniors in the community. This is a program that the City Attorney's Office has been doing for the past about five months now. We have visited various council districts. This is our sixth-day event today. And essentially, the goal is to bring services and to introduce our seniors to the various departments and services that the City of L.A., as well as nonprofits across the city, provide.
A lot of the times, as seniors age, they're retired, they're out the loop. So when you have an opportunity to bring the information and services directly to them, they feel a lot more empowered. And it's one of the best ways of how we build community, is to inform each other, keep each other in the loop with what's happening. And you have an opportunity to mastermind different ways that we can get the information to them and ways that they can contribute to what they also want to see and not just what we want to offer.
We've received some great feedback from community members, and we are happy to continue hosting these events. Right now, we are aiming to host at least one event at a different council district each month.
It's really essential for all programs if we're going to thrive and provide services that are well-meaning. A lot of times, people are interested in doing one-off events. But I think when you can have a web, it generates that real care that can grow. And you can be so creative. And then when you combine the resources, I think the sky is the limit.
Mayor Bass issues an emergency executive order related to the Palisades. A new guide will support City of L.A. childcare providers. And the L.A. Zoo now has two Tasmanian Devils on view. These stories up next on City Beat.
Following an executive order by Cal 40 Governor Newsom, Mayor Karen Bass has issued an emergency executive order to prohibit Senate Bill 9 within a very high-fire-hazard severity zone. Bass noted developers could have changed single-family lots into multiple residences, further challenging ingress and egress in the fire-damaged Palisades. According to Bass, Senate Bill 9 was not originally intended to be used in the rebuilding of a community decimated by the worst natural disaster L.A. has ever seen. Under this emergency executive order, the City of L.A. will not accept or process applications for projects within the Palisades fire area. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov press. The Community Investment for Families Department has partnered with Councilmember Nithya Raman to launch a new childcare toolkit. The Starting Strong Guide is designed to help in the process of beginning and growing childcare businesses and to give support to existing childcare operations. The Community Investment for Families Department reports that in the last decade, the City of L.A. has had a significant shortage in licensed childcare, with only 22% of children up to age 5 having licensed care. According to Councilmember Raman, this community investment in childcare providers will have an impact on future generations of Angelenos. For more information, visit communityinvestment.lacity.gov/articles. In partnership with the Australian Government, the L.A. Zoo has received two Tasmanian Devils named Danny Zuko and Crush. Tasmanian Devils are indigenous only to Tasmania, an island state of Australia where they are the top predator. According to L.A. Zoo, Tasmanian Devils are marsupials with the strongest bite force relative to body size of any mammal. This is the first time in five years that the zoo has Tasmanian Devils, and they can now be seen in the animals of Australia habitat. For more information, visit lazoo.org.
This small garden at the fire station in Woodland Hills is really only a patch, but into this patch goes a lot of community heart. And the seeds that have been planted there are now yielding some real fruits and veggies.
So we are here at Fire Station 84. We are going to be taking a look at the very abundant summer garden that we first started about a year ago. We've had four seasons now, and everything's thriving. So this seemed like a good time to show everyone what we're up to here at Station 84 in Woodland Hills.
Okay, whoa.
There were a bunch of rosebushes that were not being taken care of. I went around, I asked everyone, "Does anyone care about them?" And the response I got commonly was, "Do whatever you want with them." I fortunately teamed up with one of the local community members named Jill. We call her the Plant Lady. And she had a pretty heavy hand in making this garden happen.
So we kind of immediately got to work planning the concept. And it's just gone so much better than we could have even hoped for.
A lot of people are surprised how small the garden is, but it produces a big volume of produce and vegetables, and I think it's great.
So it supplements what the firefighters are already cooking. I mean, we kind of all know a pound of tomatoes is kind of expensive. So it does offset the cost of their food bills a little bit.
Having fresh fruits and vegetables does taste different, and it's rewarding. It brings me joy. I think it's great for all of us mentally. It helps us out.
It also builds community. And I think that's something really special about gardens. It brings people together. And that's something that this garden has also been doing, where the community is coming out. So we are inspiring people.
It's going in the salad tonight, boys.
The greatest thing that I take away from the garden is getting a bunch of firefighters and the community together to make something special happen. First, it wasn't easy, but it's come together in such a magical way that I'm pretty stoked about it.
Hearst is a lasting legacy which began with her wish to learn how to read. The extraordinary life of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune was honored by the Los Angeles Public Library at the branch that bears her name.
Today, we're celebrating the memory of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune. We've been dedicated to her memory, and we just thought this would be a great time, her 150th birthday.
We have a library that's named for our founder, and it does such wonderful work here in the community. And it's been here for a while. We were so proud and so happy to get that invitation to come and do this presentation here at this library.
And we have four or five readers talking to us about the legacy of Dr. Bethune and the work they're doing for the community.
We're happy to see all these smiling faces.
I'm going to kind of start it off and give everybody the little bit of background and history and so forth, but then I'm going to let the other ladies kind of share some input from their own personal experiences.
I look at her as a role model whose legacy transcended decades after decades after decades.
What I really liked to say in reading about Mary McLeod Bethune was a full-circle moment for us as women right now.
To honor this woman who I don't even know a word. It's just amazing. And the more I've grown with NCMW, the more I've learned about her.
Her parents were slaves, and she was told that she could never be educated. And her one wish was to learn to read. Once she learned to read, the world was open to her, and she just went from there. She was the first African-American lady who worked with a number of different organizations. She was actually president of the NAACP one time. She was president of the Urban League one time. She figured out that there was power in numbers. So she wanted to put everyone together so that they could have one voice. And that still resonates today because the issues that we had then are the issues that we still have now.
The sun's out, and there's no better time for getting the community together and hanging out at the rec center, especially when water's involved. Everyone gets to jump in before the summer slides away.
This is our summer kickoff bash, so we're welcoming the summer to our community. We've got water jumpers. We've got food. We've got ICs. Basically, what this is, is we're telling the community, "The summer's here. We want to get the community members together at the rec center." We're here with Resilient. It's a community outreach program. And again, it's all about making wonderful, safe summer for our community.
We're offering goodie bags for the kids, including backpacks and school supplies for back-to-school. All our kids are going back to school in a month or so. And we have a lot of activities here for the kids: water slides, jumpers, face painting. And we're serving lunch for all the members of the community who come by here today.
In spite of recent events, we just want the people to know that the City of Los Angeles is still here for them. It cares about them. It wants them to know that we have resources, we have numbers they can call, we have programs that can help them. Unfortunately, a lot of them might not know about this, and we just are here today spreading the word, letting them know that it's here for them.
Hey, you guys, come over here.
It's a great opportunity to bring people from the community together. You know, a lot of times in these kind of neighborhoods, we might be neighbors, but we might not be friends. And this is a perfect opportunity for us to come and meet each other and get together and break bread all in one place.
The Los Angeles Public Library has a lot more than books on offer. Step into the Mid Valley Branch Library, and you could be stepping up your physical and mental health. This is the spot for welcoming and enthusiastic community class of Zumba.
Here at the Mid Valley Library today, we have our weekly Zumba class on Saturday mornings. The 9:30 class is for adults, and we have a 10:30 session for children. It's sponsored by our friends at the Mid Valley Library.
We love to come, my daughter and I, because we like to help our help. We feel more comfortable, more happy after the class.
We have an enthusiastic group of adults that come every week for the class. They like to get out, they like to meet people in the community. Helps them move around and exercise and stay sharp and stay fit. And it's all free here at the library, too.
I'm so happy the community is actually providing this. This is something that everybody needs to step in because actually, you get socialization and you get to exercise.
Everybody in the class bonds. We have a great enthusiastic instructor that's here.
Lula is amazing. She is actually the best instructor. Makes you feel like you're a family.
There's no requirements for the class. You just show up, walk in, sign a waiver form, and you're all good to go. Just come ready to exercise, come with your sneakers.
It's also really nice to enjoy with other people. We meet people, we enjoy, we laugh.
Estas clases son completamente gratis para toda la comunidad. Invitamos a todos que asistan a las clases. Eso no es solamente para mantenerte de salud físicamente, sino también mentalmente.
So come on and join us. Why are you missing out?
The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery is located at Barnstall Art Park. The park has five different entities. We have the Hollyhock House. We have Residence A. We have the Junior Arts Center. We have the Gallery Theater. And we have the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery. So the Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery was established in 1954, and they had a number of exhibitions in here until 1971, when the current building was constructed. And this 10,000-square-foot gallery is now able to exhibit even more artists. The gallery continues after 1971 to really focus on Los Angeles artists. And in actuality, it is the first institution in Los Angeles that is dedicated to exhibiting only art. We actually predate LACMA in becoming a museum of art. One of our unique qualities is that we do not have a collection. We are always changing exhibitions. All the exhibitions at the Municipal Art Gallery is dedicated to exhibiting the art of Los Angeles artists. We have three exhibition periods a year. We have summer, fall, and spring. Every year, we also exhibit the annual COLA Exhibition, which is the Department of Cultural Affairs Award to mid-career artists. The gallery is free, so you're able to come in and see these exhibitions and learn about new artists, sometimes before they've even been featured in a gallery. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery provides this space as an outlet for artists. And it's so important to continue to support the arts as a medium for our community to respond to the issues that are occurring in our world today. The arts are incredibly important. They provide that additional outlet for our community to express themselves and to learn from others. The Municipal Art Gallery can be a place where dialogue can occur between different groups and learning about diverse issues that are happening in our society today. It is so inspiring to see the visitors coming into the gallery and engaging with the art. That is really what our institution is all about. How do the visitors get to learn about something new, be challenged by ideas that different artworks promote, and also see beauty? It brings me much joy and satisfaction to know that I'm just overjoyed to really honor and promote the arts and local artists. You can find out about what's happening by visiting our website, lamag.org, or following us on Instagram, @lamagbarnstall. We are very prominent on social media.
In this week's Things to Do, enjoy open-air theater in Griffith Park, catch some kitsch culture and history at the Central Library, and dig in for an L.A. sanitation home composting workshop. All this up next on Things to Do.
If it's summer, it must be the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. This year, the Independent Shakespeare Company also presents Marlowe's Dr. Faustus. In the play, a mysterious scholar wishes to master the dark arts and strikes a deal with the devil to make it happen. Dr. Faustus takes to the stage from Wednesday through Sunday, beginning on August 6. Enjoy theater under the stars at the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival with Dr. Faustus, playing Wednesdays through Sundays at 7:00 p.m. from August 6 until the 31st. Find out more at culture.lacity.gov/events. Join L.A.'s Public Library for a fun-filled afternoon of storytelling with pop culture author Charles Phoenix. Known as the king of retro, Phoenix is a mid-century pop culture expert, performer, and collector celebrating classic and kitsch American life and style. On Sunday, August 17, Phoenix is bringing some of today's most vibrant historians together, including Foo Howser, Merchant Motel, and The Hood Historian. Come and learn something new about the city you live in. Visit the Mark Taper Auditorium at Downtown L.A. Central Library for Charles Phoenix with special guests on Sunday, August 17, at 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. L.A. Sanitation and Environment presents a series of local workshops. And on Saturday, August 16, they host home composting and urban gardening in the South L.A. Wetlands. Learn how easy it is to compost at home. An L.A. sanitation green waste specialist will show you how to turn kitchen scraps and yard trimmings into nutrients for your soil. Register on Eventbrite for your spot, which includes a plant giveaway for each attendee. Head to the South L.A. Wetlands for home composting and urban gardening on Saturday, August 16, at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit sanitation.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. And we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Considered by the Public Works Committee. Items eighty-two and eighty-three are closed session items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, those items are now before us. Members, are there any specials? Any specials, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, I'd like to receive and file item ten as the fees were paid. And CD nine request to receive and file item fifteen and continue item sixteen for six months.
And for the record, for item sixteen, that would be continued to Wednesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-six. Is there a second to the motions to receive and file items ten and fifteen?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then also item fifty-one for a separate vote and remarks.
All right, item five-one. All right, Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. On nineteen, I would like to receive and file the lien.
All right.
Is there a second to this motion? Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to call items forty, forty-one, and forty-two for a separate vote, and I would like to continue item number one to October seventeenth. And I have a technical amendment for item sixty-seven to change the date from September sixteenth to September fifteenth.
Is there a second to this motion? Thank you. Councilmember Rodrio.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hutt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I'd like to continue item number eighteen to October fifteenth.
October one-five?
That's right.
All right, without objection.
Thank you.
Bedore, Councilmember Rodrio.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to receive and file item twenty-five, also move to adopt the H and H report dated July thirtieth for item thirty-seven.
And for item twenty-five, is there a second to this motion to receive and file the lien? Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Move to receive and file item number two.
All right.
Is there a second to this motion? Thank you.
All right, what's next, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items twenty-nine through thirty-nine, forty-three through fifty, and fifty-two through fifty-four.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirty-nines.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may now move on to closed session items seventy-three through eighty, considered by the Budget and Finance Committee.
All right, Councilmember Yarstowski.
Thank you, Council President. Budget and Finance considered and approved items seventy-three through eighty in committee on August fifth. I recommend we approve these items.
All right, those items are now before us.
And if I may, sir, read the settlement amounts. Thank you, Mr. President. For item seventy-three in the case entitled Robert Sarguzian versus Marvin Gonzalez et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to two hundred thousand dollars in settlement. For item seventy-four in the case entitled Sarkis Kalajian et al versus City of Los Angeles et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in settlement. For item seventy-five in the case entitled Matthew Parenti versus City of Los Angeles et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to three hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents in settlement. For item seventy-six in the case entitled David Quinones et al versus Edwin Sanchez et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to three hundred forty thousand dollars in settlement. For item seventy-seven in the case entitled Leah Ramirez et al versus City of Los Angeles et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in settlement. For item seventy-eight in the case entitled Anthony Doian versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to one million one hundred fifty thousand dollars in settlement. For item seventy-nine in the case entitled Lee Newsom versus City of Los Angeles et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to two million eight hundred eleven thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-six cents plus accrued interest in settlement. And for item eighty in the case entitled Morna Kalye et al versus City of Los Angeles et al, there's a recommendation to expend up to one hundred twenty thousand dollars in settlement.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirty-nines.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may now move on to closed session item eighty-one, considered by the Public Works Committee.
All right, do we have a recommendation from the Public Works Committee?
It was to continue the item.
Actually, it would be eighty-one, considered by the Public Works Committee in closed session. And for item eighty-one in the case relative to the Federal Highway Administration, United States Department of Transportation Administrative Case Numbers twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two-two-six and twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-zero-six, there's a recommendation to approve the city attorney's recommendation.
All right, that item is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten-eighths.
All right, what's next?
The council may now move on to public comment.
All right, Mr. Clerk, I have a motion to continue item one-three, which we may have already voted on, for six months, inasmuch a payment plan has been agreed to.
And, sir, that would be item one, sir?
Item one-three, thirteen?
One-three, sir, thank you. And that would be Wednesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-six.
All right, without objection. All right, before we go to public comment, we have a very special announcement from Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I am honored to recognize the upcoming eightieth anniversary of Korean Independence Day. I should say, Councilmember Hutt and I are recognizing the upcoming eightieth anniversary of Korean Independence Day on August fifteenth. Normally, we would hold this event and host this event on Friday for a bigger celebration, but because it's the eightieth anniversary, there are events planned around the Koreatown area, and because this is an incredibly special day for Koreans across the globe as it commemorates the day on which Koreans regained sovereignty from colonial rule. For Koreans everywhere, this day represents the courage, resilience, and sacrifice of those who secured Korea's independence after decades of colonial rule. Every year, but especially this year, on its eightieth anniversary, we proudly remember resistance leaders, activists, and everyday citizens who refuse to let their nation's identity be erased. Today, Korea's presence on the world's stage is stronger than ever. From K-pop to K-beauty, Korean culture has become a vibrant part of everyday life for millions around the globe. These cultural achievements not only showcase the creativity and innovation of Korean people, but also foster connections that transcend borders. As we recognize this important milestone, let us honor the struggles that won Korea's freedom, celebrate the achievements of Korean people everywhere, and reaffirm our commitment to building connections across cultures. I also want to acknowledge the Korean American Federation of Los Angeles for its decades of dedicated service to our community, including preserving Korean heritage, amplifying our voices, and bringing generations together across Los Angeles. And I'd personally like to thank Councilmember Hutt for her involvement in the different activities and putting up the banners to announce the celebration of our eightieth anniversary. And I'm also proud to be joined by CAFLA, Korean American Federation of Los Angeles' President, Robert Ahn, who leads this incredible organization and works day in and day out to keep Los Angeles and our Korean community moving forward. Mr. Ahn, do you mind saying a few words?
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lee, first of all, I want to thank you always for representing Korean Americans so well. We're very proud of you, and we always appreciate your support. Councilmember Hutt, thank you so much for the banners and for providing the support for the event we have this coming Friday. Council President, thank you for accommodating us today. Each and every year, on eight fifteen, Korean Independence Day, Koreans all over the world, we celebrate and commemorate Korea's liberation eighty years ago. We honor the freedom fighters and all those individuals that fought for independence and for freedom, and which paved the way for future generations and modern-day Korea as we know it today. So we thank you again for allowing us to be here today, for joining in on the commemoration. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Ahn, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite everyone out on Friday night at nine-thirty at Two Hundred Spring, where we will be able to see the illumination. Councilmember Lee is illuminating on the fourteenth, I am illuminating on the fifteenth, so we will have a strong celebration. Please join me at Two Hundred North Spring, nine-thirty P.M., so that we can see the illumination. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Clerk, City Attorney, if you can prepare for public comment, which, members in the gallery, it is now twenty-five minutes after ten A.M.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There is a request to reconsider item thirty-five for consideration of a motion to adopt the Housing and Homelessness Committee report.
All right, can we do that without objection, or do we need a vote?
We need an introduction of the motion and a second, sir. We need to vote on the reconsideration first, sir.
All right, so is there a motion to reconsider?
Thank you, Council President. I put forward a motion to reconsider item thirty-five.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Rahman. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen-eighths.
All right, and so now what's before us?
Before us, before the council is a motion to adopt the Housing and Homelessness Committee report, sir. Is there a first and a second?
First. First.
Rahman, seconds.
Thank you.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen-eighths.
All right.
And if the council would like to vote on item thirty-seven now, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll on thirty-seven, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen-eighths.
All right, what's next?
Council may now vote on items forty, forty-one, and forty-two, called special by Councilmember Hernandez for a separate vote.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, called special by Councilmember Hernandez for a separate vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve-eighths, two noes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item fifty-one, called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for a separate vote and remarks.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, thank you, colleagues. And I want to thank Mr. Blumenfeld for his amendment to ensuring that the lot that is going to be made available by this action is actually going to be accessible to all of us in the city and not limited to any one particular operation. But colleagues, I just wanted to, again, flag, because one of the frustrations that I know so many taxpayers continue to reflect on is the fact that we need to really get our hands around the expenditures associated with the work on homelessness. And unfortunately, as I've continued to request, and I appreciated that there's been some substantial report backs that have come as a result of the inside safe operations, what continues to be left blank and pending, dating back to two thousand twenty-three, is an accounting for how these dollars are being spent. So going back to two thousand twenty-three, we're still not getting a detailed report of the expenditures associated with inside safe. We're not getting an accounting for how much each facility and what the services that are being provided, we're not getting a detailed accounting, and this goes back to two thousand twenty-three. Now, we don't have to remind ourselves of the fiscal crisis that we're in, but how are we going to have an honest conversation about how we get our hands around this, about how much is being spent on this effort, what it's truly costing, at a time when we are watching so many taxpayers and so many residents in Los Angeles that continue to struggle to make ends meet? So I say this to you to say that I recognize, you know, this is a report, there's procedurally advancing some marked progress in terms of identifying facilities that we can utilize for the disposition and temporary placement of RVs. However, one of the issues that continues to just rub me the wrong way is that the centralized effort in the mayor's office for this boutique program is not delivering the accountability for the dollars that it's been afforded to implement this program. And so when everyone asks, where's the money, we should be able to have a detailed accounting. And going back to two thousand twenty-three, we're still not getting it. There's been ample time to update these records, and the mayor's office continues to just thumb their nose at us. So I'm going to continue to vote no because this report is incomplete, and we should not be accepting non-answers in reports to the council when it comes to fiscal accountability. So I will be casting a no vote. Thank you.
All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirty-nines, one no.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, the council may now proceed to public comment.
All right, it's ten-thirty now, so we will take public comment up till eleven-thirty A.M. We'll take as many people as we can. So please, speakers, be respectful of the other speakers here, get to the mic as quickly as you can and start, and leave the podium as soon as your time is done so the next person can start. Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. President. To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are items two through twelve, items fourteen through fifteen. Mr. Herman, this is your first and only formal warning, do not disrupt me trying to give instructions to the room and letting everybody, including yourself, know which items are open for public comment. If you disrupt this meeting again, you'll be subject to removal pursuant to Rule seven and Rule twelve. Apologies. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items two through twelve, fourteen through fifteen, seventeen, nineteen through twenty-eight, fifty-five through seventy-two, and eighty-two through eighty and eighty-three. So again, let me repeat. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items two through twelve, fourteen and fifteen, seventeen, nineteen through twenty-eight, fifty-five through seventy-two, and eighty-two and eighty-three. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in a city's subject matter jurisdiction. A couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters make this first one aloud for the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you. One final announcement, as the council president has stated, we are going to take public comment until eleven-thirty, or until, if we exhaust before that, then we will end before that. In order to help us run an efficient public comment, we would ask that you please wait until you hear the name you signed up under called aloud over the speakers before lining up. The order in which the names are called are at random, it is randomly generated. So again, please wait till you hear your name called aloud. Once you do so, once you hear that name, you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Thank you.
I'll begin calling names. George Busetti, Dana, and Dynapoli.
Which items would you like to speak to?
You don't mean good morning to me, because you guys hate my ass. So are thirty-eight and thirty-nine open to speak to? Come on, give me an answer.
No, they are not. The public comment was already held.
Okay, so I'm going to switch to what I signed up again on, liens, one through six. Something I have a lot of expertise with.
All right, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Are you guys aware that in your joint powers authority five-year plan that you've budgeted to take five hundred pieces of property, any of you aware of that? I know you're not, but I have that plan, and that's what you're up to doing. You took my friend's five hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of property, made her and her husband homeless. Police found him when he got lost in a trash can headfirst down in it. You're so nice, aren't you? And you, Mr. City Attorney, we're going to take your damn bar license and put you in jail with criminal charges.
So you're more than welcome to talk about it during general public comment, but for the agenda items comment, please stick to the agenda items, this is your first and only warning.
Oh, I think it has to do with it because you're a party to this action on liens, Bud. So maybe you need to learn the law since you don't know it.
Okay, we politely ask you to stick to the agenda items. You failed to do so, I'm going to move you to general public comment. You have one minute.
No, I still have item seventy-two here, since you don't pay attention to nothing. You don't know the law, you got no concentration in your brain, you're acting like Trumpler. So how is it that you so-called smart-ass people do a deal with Gibson Dunn and Crutcher for nine hundred grand for three years, and you let them run up one point eight million in two weeks? Everything in this agenda item, in your agenda, under, have you analyzed any fiscal responsibility? You're so smart that you can't even figure out what it'd take me an hour or two to figure out financially. When we were in court, we heard your city attorney slime that judge, Judge Carter, his people, the federal court systems nationally, every federal ju-
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Speaker, you were warned to get on topic for the agenda items, you failed to do so, so we moved you to general public comment. Your time has expired, you are now disrupting this meeting, so I'm going to ask politely, please vacate the podium so we can move on to the next speaker. This is your first and only formal warning, do not continue to disrupt this meeting, or else you'll be subject to removal and exclusion pursuant to Rule seven and Rule twelve. So, Mr. President, the speaker is refusing to leave the podium and is continuing to disrupt public comment, he is eligible for removal as he has been warned previously. Next speaker.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Nigeria, Ron, and Christine Rodriguez.
Good morning, Speaker. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Council President Smokey Scan. Let's start with item number sixty-four. Number sixty-four is about providing more tree planting services. I am here to support this item because me and my friend Dana, we always like to play on the trees. But however, right now, we are struggling in City of L.A. because we have no more trees to climb onto. So right now, this item is specifically working with the community partners to make sure we are extending the contract, we are planting more trees. So people like me, people like Dana, people like me and Dana, we can continue to go on on top of the trees, and we can play on top of the trees. So yes, second of all, I want to add on this item, that I want to make sure there should be another at least minimum twenty-five thousand trees in the City of L.A. because City of L.A. is a so-big, big city. We need twenty-five thousand more trees. Now, let's move on to item number, let's try item number sixty-six. The item number sixty-six is for two additional security officers for the Runyon Canyon Park. Yes, I am here to support this item, but however, I am here to advocate, we want five LAPD officers in this park. Security officers does not work because your security officer just stand right there doing nothing. We want to make sure we have five fully armed LAPD officers running, protecting, securing this park. Because last time, me and Dana, we were playing on this park, there are so many people, gangbangers, cartel, they jump on us, and all of, both of me and Dana, we got beat up. So we need more safety on this park, so me and Dana, we can continue to go back to this park to play. Now, let's move on to item number, item number sixty-seven. Item number sixty-seven, it is about the Mexican Independence Day. I am here to disagree with this item because, because this is, this country is the United States of America, and I am here to advocate the American Independence Day. But however, our council member, like, for example, Unicef Hernandez, our council member Soto Martinez, they are continuing to recognize the Mexican holiday. I think both of them chose the wrong job. They are supposed to be the Mexican council member, not the American council member. That's the part I'm confused, because Dana and I, we are trying to acknowledge the American tradition, we are here to observe the American holiday, we don't really care about whatever Mexican cartel or whatever whatsoever. Now, during the general public comment, I am here to inform our family from Smokey Scan that to make sure we are going to elect Councilmember Spindler into the office, we are going to defeat Hernandez, we're going to win, 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 to the point that you got tired of winning, and now President Trump was saying like, oh no, we haven't even got started, but we're going to continue, win, 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 win. That's the, was that, that's exactly what is going to happen in two thousand twenty-six, Council District One election. Councilmember Spindler will take over the city council, we're going to make sure to eliminate all of the woke, all of the corrupt, all of the criminal from the city council, make sure Councilmember Spindler will clean house. At least, I received the sunglasses from Dana, very pink, I love it, I received the shirt from Dana, very pink, I love it. Thank you very much, Dana, for your support, and I will continue to support you and support your family, Smokey Scan, thank you.
Next speaker. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
God bless America. God bless Donald J. Trump.
So this is your first and only warning, I need you to stick to the agenda items for your first three minutes. You know the rules, you're here at almost every meeting.
I should be able to provide an introduction to my topic on number sixty-seven without your further interruption.
Then please speak to item sixty-seven.
Now, if you're here to protect Mexican Day, well, that tells me you're against Donald J. Trump, our president. So stop interfering, let me try to comprehend my intelligence before your ignorance and stupidity of an idiot gets involved in my public comment.
So you're welcome to insult me during general public comment, but for now, please stick to the agenda items.
So let me go to item number seven, asshole. Now, to the dumbass to my left here, everyone, and Smokey Scan, there she is. CD six, the property located at seven-seven-zero-eight North Beck Avenue, Ms. Padilla, what are you going to do about it? That's a lot of money to make someone homeless, that's a lot of money for one Hispanic or black or minority to come with, because you, little crybaby Latina from Mexico who comes into our country, want to put a lien on our properties. If you're here with the lien, I demand you come here on this podium and put on record your lien, and ask for a receipt, because if not, these douchebags like that douchebag over there, that dumbass in CD six, will do the same. And by the way, look at three items, three items, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, you moron. Current price, a convicted felon, where is he? He was all over the news last night, smeared by his manipulation of bad development and corruption with his two fucking wives. Why is that, Smokey Scan?
So I'm going to ask that, your last chance, connect this to the items, or you can speak to it during general public comment.
Yeah, the property is located at five-seven East Ninety Street. The other one is at, property located at three-forty-six East Ninety Street. The other property, you jackass moron, before you fucking interrupt me, is located at four-twenty-three East Twenty-Fifth Street. So I am on topic, fuck you. My last item, regarding the goddamn motherfucking bullshit about Alliance- My last item regarding the goddamn motherfucking bullshit about Alliance versus Rights on the City of Los Angeles for 1.8 million taxpayers' dollars. Thank yourselves. Thank yourselves for paying these assholes for two weeks of work 'cause that moron up there can't do business on behalf of the public's interest. You dumbass, big head with that dot on your furze, Smoking Scan.
General public comment.
Now, into my general public comment. Brandenburg versus Ohio. A Supreme Court ruling, everyone, under 395, 444, 1969, specifically states, "Send the Jews back to Israel." Why is that? Because they control the money tree in this city and in my pants to suck a dick, dicks. But when we get Ms. Hernandez out of District 1, everyone in Los Angeles, everyone is Smoking Scan. Every white MF like me is gonna say, "Vote for Wayne Spindler and not for Duarte, the three-inch dick over there sergeant." Because we know fat burger is nothing without cheese, and we'll grill her onion fat ass. So everyone in the world-
And your time has expired. Please vacate the podium so we can move on to the next speaker. I would note that you've already been warned, so if you disrupt this meeting again, you'll be subject to removal and exclusion. Good morning, Speaker.
Hi, good morning.
Which items would you like to speak to?
I wanted to speak on 35. Can I still do that?
So 35 is not open for public comment because we took it at committee, but you can speak to it during general, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, got it. My name is Christine. I'm a renter in Pasadena. I work for tenants who are going through evictions. I also am in the Pasadena Housing Rental Board. I'm coming here as an individual on behalf of the rental brigade. We've been tracking rent gouging after the fires. And regarding item number 35, I just really want to encourage you folks to work with the city attorney so that we can get some data about what's going on with rent gouging. I feel like there has not been a lot of data, so it's hard to make informed decisions about how to enforce rent gouging. I'm hoping that with the data that is able to be gathered about who is getting rent gouged, how much, and how long that's been going on, we can really be able to hold landlords accountable for, you know, increasing the prices for rents after a traumatic event such as losing your home in a fire or having to be displaced in the fire. I want to thank the city council for, again, putting this item on the agenda and really want to encourage you to, let's get that data, let's see what's going on so that we can make informed decisions and hold people accountable. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Edward Flores, Yong Chun, Adam Smith, and Carlos Campero.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Groot, could you get ahold of this room? Because everybody was talking over the last speaker, and that's just completely rude.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
And for the record, I signed up as Ron Artest. I would like to speak on item 16, 17, 62 in general comment.
Okay, so item 17 isn't open for public comment, but you have three items, you can obviously speak during general. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Still a lot of chatter going on, but I'll move on. Items 16, 17, 62 are all related to Council District 9. And in light of the new charges, I hereby ask for a complete and total shutdown of current prices items until we figure out what the hell is going on. The most fascinating part about this and why we have to wonder about these items is when he failed to recuse himself, apparently, prices staff had flagged the items of interest prior to the votes. Weird. And I just think you should know that a little birdie has informed me that there might be more to come regarding CD 9. The people of L.A. started calling you out as the clown show because you don't pay attention, because you can't sit in your seats, and because one by one by one, you keep on dropping like flies. Weezer, Englander, Ridley Thomas, Martinez, Adillo, De Leon, Price, Lee, all in just five years. And you wanna talk about other people being a circus, a clown show? Some people around here pretend to have a hokey-dokie Ned Flanders energy and really got a sideshow Bob energy. And on that note, I have to have a heart-to-heart with Councilmember Bloomingfield, wherever he is. I worry he's on the wrong path, and then I'm gonna have to expose the true nature of sideshow Bob to a wider audience. General comment, Groot.
Okay, you have one minute.
The audacity of this guy to appoint a closeted Trump supporter to the Charter Commission for the sole purpose of rigging it to the far-right, appointing a blind bull in a china shop who will do nothing more than serve as a kamikaze for anything good, to appoint someone who repeatedly referred to a full-third of this council as being part of the crazy train. And that crazy train doesn't just include the lefties, it includes people like our esteemed and honorable Council President. I'd really prefer not to get messy, but if you leave me no choice, so be it. We will have a sideshow. You may be termed out, but this will follow you and anyone around here who goes along with it. Some of you, Councilmember Park, just to make an example, might be a conservative Democrat, but she's not really in a position right now to associate someone who talks about illegal aliens and peeling back Special Order 40. You might have to start asking, I might have to start asking, how your anointed successor in CD 3 feels about this choice. I'm not gonna wait around long. I'll give you a couple days to clean it up.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
My name is Edward Flores. I'm speaking only general public comment off the agenda.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Very good, thank you. My name is Edward Flores. I am a member of the Olvera Street Merchants Association. Also a merchant on Olvera Street, owner of Juanitas Cafe, which is 81 years old this year. And I'm also a neighborhood council member. The reason I'm here is because I've never seen the visitor ship so down on Olvera Street since the height of COVID. And that's because of two factors. The ICE raids have diminished the visitor ship from the Hispanic community, but also because of utilization of Olvera Street as a staging ground for protests. I understand that the intentions are well, however, utilizing that space for that purpose constantly, as it's been happening for the last couple of months, has scared away many of the visitors, many foreigners and people that would otherwise come to Olvera Street and visit that place, people that don't want to be involved with activism. And so I'm asking that you put a halt to that. It's also been very neglected. We have a lot of mental illness there, insufficient funding for marketing and other events. And so I hope that you'll work in revitalizing Olvera Street. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Angela Birdsong, Solis, Christopher Dorner, and Audie La.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
64. Good morning. Councilman, my name is Carlos Campero, and I'm the Executive Director of City Plants. I want to thank all of you actually for your support. I've actually physically planted trees with some of you throughout the City of Los Angeles, both as in my time as Executive Director of City Plants, but also during my 35 years at the L.A. Conservation Corps. And I'm here today just to, um, ask you if you would please consider approving our extension through December 31st. And then another item that I hope I don't get in trouble for mentioning, there is a request from the City Attorney's Office to start a request for proposal, an RFP process. Unfortunately, there isn't, um, an RFP in place, and there isn't an agency within the city to start the RFP, which unfortunately will cause a pause of up to potentially a year in services of trees. And these are trees that we plant and provide to residents of the City of Los Angeles, specifically to underserved communities. Sorry.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I will be speaking to items, um, number 72 in general comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general, so you'll see one minute on the clock. That's for the item. Once that's done, we'll give you an additional minute for general public comment, so go ahead.
It'd be a continuous talking point. Thank you. Okay, hello, my name is Angela Birdsong. I'm speaking on item 72 in general comment. I'm a housing rights coordinator for Los Angeles Community Action Network, better known as LA CAN. While the city attorney is happily paying 1.8 million dollars to a private law firm pursuant to a sole-source contract for 13 days of work, at the same time, the city attorney blew up the Stay-Housed L.A. sole-source contract with several negative consequences, including, there is no rental assistance for tenants because the 2025 to 2026 U.L.A. budget has been allocated to Stay-Housed L.A. There's no rental assistance. Tenants are being displaced needlessly while 3.7 million in U.L.A. rental assistance sits in the city coffers and can't be used for anything else. There is not enough money to provide legal services for seven months while the RFP is in process. This will mean Stay-Housed L.A. would have to stop providing legal services before the seven months is up. Even though there is 39 million dollars of U.L.A. eviction defense money sitting in the city coffers that can't be used for anything else. The city attorney is presently, right now, auditing Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, legal services for poor people, but signing a blank check for a white shoe law firm to represent the city. Why is the city so willing to pay private attorneys 1,295 dollars per hour but not pay for services approved with money that was specifically allocated for that purpose? 1.8 million could pay rental assistance for approximately 150 households and eviction defense for services for approximately 240 households. This reverse Robin Hood is an unnecessary evil action by the city attorney. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Michael Ackerman, Jason Reedy, Zokotl, Josie McCoy, Miyasha, Smoking Scan, Sabra, and King Chong.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Um, I'll just say all items and general public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Where'd Groot go? I was gonna tell him how much I missed him over the break. Let's start with item 66. Um, so apparently, when Councilmember Rahmman was calling to defund the police in her campaign, she meant defund the police and give that money to private security. We also have item 72 regarding L.A. Alliance for Human Rights at all over City of Los Angeles. While I disagree with the motives of the plaintiffs in this case, I do feel strongly that the way this city has used the issue of our unhoused resident population to funnel money into the hands of highly-paid administrators, and in a lot of ways, it seems tantamount to embezzlement. I'm glad that the city council is having to reckon with, and I want to thank Councilmember Rodriguez for her thoughtful words and for her no vote on accepting the report from the Housing and Homelessness Committee. Because we are lacking details, and this is just one example of how refusing to simply provide housing to the unhoused and to take drastic steps to make existing homes affordable is costing the city leaps and bounds more than it would to just house people and keep folks in their apartments. But if we did that, then these administrators wouldn't have the opportunity to make six-figure salaries on the taxpayer's dime. So I guess that's why we continue to do that. Item 65, lighting up City Hall for quote-unquote "Algrito", which is like the Spanish term for their Independence Day, but also, interestingly enough, a traditional call to arms to fight for their independence. So while I disagree with spending 438 dollars to throw lights on a building in a fiscal crisis, I do agree that we should be echoing a call to arms. This dovetails into 67, which is seemingly redundant because, again, we're lighting up City Hall for Mexican Independence Day, which I, I think that that is something good to honor, especially while our city is in cahoots with the federal government, as much as it would like to pretend like it's not. The status of the national special security event renders anything you say against these ICE raids useless because the federal government has complete jurisdiction under that status. We shouldn't be throwing 438 dollars to light up City Hall in a fiscal emergency. 64 is for tree planting. Let's plant more trees, but also let's not bulldoze and uproot trees to build gentrifying buildings like the one that Plum Committee discussed in Lincoln Heights yesterday. Let's, let's focus on empty commercial space instead. Holding us back, the president's holding us back. And I thought Cricorian was bad. Compared to Marquise, he's a Chad. When we're speaking, the council is not listening. If they even stay in the room, they're with each other chatting. Oh, the disrespect you give to us. The president is a word that rhymes with hunt, and each of you who ignores us. Can you think of a word that rhymes with hunt? Rhymes with hunt. You know that you're that name. Leave home, come downtown, morning of a weekday now, just to have the city council ignoring us. Is this America where you censor us? You wonder why they say that you rhyme with hunt. Shout out Smoking Scan, and thank you very much to Mr. McCosker and Nazarian for paying attention. I appreciate you very much.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Donald Harlan, Rob Kwan, Amy Ho, Damian Martin, Andrew Grabner, Tanny Ling, Sophie Hanks, John Christensen, Eli Oraga, Amara Jackson, Duarte, Scott, Rodney, Phyllis, Stacy, and Mike.
Good morning, Speaker. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Let's see here, item number 72. We have the L.A. Alliance and your motherfucking outside council. Let's give Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutcher a big hand for raping Nithya Ramanoodle in the city council on that lawsuit. Yeah, that's right. A shout-out to Noodle for fucking the city on homelessness. And a special shout-out on the Alliance for Moni Cowcunt Regus for willing to testify. She was willing to testify against the city and give up her colleagues. Let's give her a hand. Thank you, Meg. Now, the FBI is gonna call you tomorrow. Oops, sorry.
We can hold Mr. Spindler's time.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Spindler?
What?
You have used one of our forbidden words in violation of Council Rule 7. This is your only word, warning that this word or any variations as described in Rule 7. When you interrupt me, you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Spindler has his first warning for disrupting the meeting. This word nor any of its variations can be used in our, in this council meeting or any future council meeting or council committee meetings. If you violate Rule 7 again, you will forfeit your speaking time. You will be subject to removal pursuant to Rule 7 and 12. Please start the timer again, and do note you have been warned, Mr. Spindler.
And to be clear, that is for the use of the C-word. Go ahead.
So on item 7, on the advice of my counsel, I am exercising my privilege to remain silent under the Fifth Amendment, Sixth Amendment, and Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. On item 6, I would love to talk about Imelda and her fraud. But on the advice of counsel, now that I have been accused of a crime, I am hereby exercising my right to remain silent under the Fourth, the Fifth, the Sixth, and the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. On item number 4, I may be called as a witness possibly against Councilwoman Imelda Padilla, and I hereby exercise my right to privilege to counsel, the right to confidentiality under federal whistleblower protections, and under protections under the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. I would like to talk about Bob Blebenbleield and the fraud that he's committing on number 3. However, on the advice of counsel, I will have to exercise my right to remain silent under the Fifth, Sixth, and Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. I would like to talk about bald-headed Nazarian, the goat herder, on number 2. However, unfortunately, I will have to remain silent under the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Fourteenth Amendment.
Speaker, the exercise of your rights, not that I believe that they are applicable, is not on the agenda.
I am testifying.
So if you'd like to speak to item number 2, you can. If you do not wish to speak to item number 2, and you do not have to do so,
I just did.
Stick to the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment. Go ahead.
Please, I just did. I am telling you why I have to express my comments the way that I'm doing. On item number 1, regarding Hamburger Hernandez and her lien for 3,800 dollars, I would love to talk about the fraud and corruption. However, on the advice of counsel, I have to remain silent on the matter under the Fifth, Sixth, and- Sixth, and Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution. Now, for my general comment, guess who got indicted? Ha, 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 ha! Look, he's not here, that little bitch. That little N-I-G-G-E-R bitch is not here today. What a fucking shame. What a loser N-word. I can't believe it. How do you get indicted when you have government immunity? I have friends that killed people, and they had government immunity and were never charged. Did you know that, Unisus? How can this man with government immunity be charged? And of course, I brought Unisus a snack. So in her honor, I will eat this delicious treat. Mmm. And I encourage all of you council members to eat this, because I want you to work your way up to a stroke, heart disease, AIDS, pancreatic cancer, and lung cancer, so that your seats get vacant faster. So again, fuck you all. I told you, there's two more defendants coming in the case.
Am I on? People know very well that they're being harmed as a result of police non-feasance, and I really don't understand why council members won't take the modest step of asking the governor to intervene. I think you'd do it only if... Excuse me. I think you'd do it only to show that you're being diligent and so you don't get blamed. As I've said, the only legitimate excuse for not requesting the National Guard investigators for police oversight is if you are under duress, and that is not an acceptable situation. Please tell the public why you are refusing to take this zero-cost action. And finally, shout-out to Smoking Scan for his unique take.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Item number 71.
You have one minute.
Hi, my name is King Chung. The city council passed a resolution supporting SB 71 in May, but before the ink was dried, a dirty hand inserted Section 3 into the proposed law to support a billionaire. Do they think the people of Los Angeles are morons that would do not see this corruption? And the billionaires are using their money and power to further benefit themselves? As you can see, the people are fighting back. We want the city to oppose SB 71 unless Section 3 is removed. Will the city council support the people or support the billionaires? Please do the right thing.
Damian Martin, general public comment.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Good morning, council president, council staff, public. My name is Damian Martin. I'm a co-founder and attorney for Catalyst Cannabis Co. In that role, I spent a great deal of time working on the problem of smoke shops illegally selling cannabis. So here's my general public comment. I just wanted to thank Councilmember McCosker for his motion to place a moratorium on smoke shops near sensitive uses in CD 15. It's a real problem. These smoke shops sell weed, they sell nitrous oxide attracted to children, giant cans of whipped cream, they park right next to schools, they got the doors wide open, you don't even have to check in, show your ID, nothing. They sell Hot Cheetos, sodas, are things that are attracted to children. So they're a real problem related to that. My son in another city, he goes to a middle school, it's right next to one of these smoke shops. I told the principals that I was working on this problem, they were so happy about it. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot of happy principals, teachers, and parents in CD 15. They should be happy citywide. This should be a citywide policy. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'm here to speak on item 71. I'm John Christensen. I teach and do research at UCLA and the Institute of the Environment and Sustainability and the Lusken Center for Innovation. The resolution at item 71 is a necessary correction of a flawed and surreptitious policymaking process with no transparency or any public input that has led to a bad policy in Senate Bill 71, which is now before the State Assembly. This council supported SB 71, a CEQA reform bill, on May 23. Six days later, on May 29, lobbyist Scott Language inserted that grants special favor to one project in the entire state. It also extends its special status way beyond CEQA to any and all approvals at the local level. If the city wants to do that, it should be done here in this council, not in Sacramento. The council can correct this flaw by passing this motion rescinding its support for SB 71 unless Section 3 is removed. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number 71.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Tawny Ling. I am a Chinatown resident. I'm here to speak in support of council item 71, the motion to rescind support for Senate Bill 71 unless Section 3 is removed. It's pretty simple. SB 71 started as a really good transportation bill that would expedite bus lanes, bike lanes, and pedestrian enhancements, and that's what you voted unanimously to support. Now it contains a Third Amendment that allows the fast-tracking of a billionaire's private project. It also undermines local land use rights, authorities, and decision-making, and it's a state legislation that was snuck in, and it just targets three areas, CD 1, 13, and 14. This is an attack, another attack on our local communities and local control. So I think this is a no-brainer, vote to support council item 71, which asks to rescind support for Senate Bill 71 unless Section 3 is removed. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
71.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item. Go ahead.
My name is Phyllis Ling. I'm a resident in Chinatown, speaking in support of item 71, the motion to rescind support for SB 71 unless amended to remove Section 3. Section 3 is a special favor for one billionaire, Frank McCourt, who spent over $500,000 lobbying Sacramento for it. It's really dirty what they are doing, trying to go around our communities and take away local control. That's why Section 3 does, and you can't let them do that. You can't let them lie about it. They've been saying that the city supports Section 3, and that's not true. Please pass the motion 1. Want to thank council member Unises Hernandez and council member Jurado as the other council members to support us. Thank you.
Hi, morning.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
71.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thanks. My name is Amy, last name is Ho, H-O, and I'm here to support item 71, and I'm here to beg all our dearest and respectful council members, please, remove Section 3. I'm here, you know, please focus more on our people's livelihood issues such as hospital facilities, supermarket, and parking, but not to praise to the McCourt, the dynasty, the billionaire. We don't need him here. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody. That concludes public comment. We will have a couple quick announcements before we go for business, and a very, very special one first, from our own council member Rahman.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to welcome my parents, Venket and Sudha Rahman, here to the chambers. They are visiting from Boston for a week, and they've never seen council in action, so I'm really excited for them to see all the delights and all the oddities. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome, welcome, welcome. Enjoy Los Angeles. Councilmember McCosker.
Welcome. Here's one of those exciting actions. For items 27 and 28, I would like to move that we waive the late fees and the interest for both properties. Property owners came and settled their account. I'd ask for a second on that motion.
All right, second it.
Thank you.
All right, council member Padilla.
Yes, I'd like to continue items 4 and 7 till September 10.
All right, without objection. Councilmember Park.
Thank you, council president. Earlier, I moved to receive and file item 19. I'd like to add an additional instruction to waive the late fees and interest.
One more time into the mic.
An additional instruction to waive the late fees and interest on item 9.
All right, without objection.
19.
All right. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like to continue item 8 till September 10.
All right, cool. It's great how these things get worked out. All right, what's before us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items 2, 3, 5, 6, 9, 11, 12, 14, 15, 17, 19 through 23, and 25 and 26.
All right, let's open the rolls on those items. Hold on, apologies, Mr. President. I believe that there's a new request to continue item 3, one week.
And for the record, that would be Wednesday, August 20, 2025.
All right, let's open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, there's a request to continue items 8 to Wednesday, September 10, 2025.
Without objection.
Thank you, sir. Item 24 to Wednesday, August 27, 2025, and items 82 and 83 to Friday, August 15, 2025.
All right, without objection. Those will be the orders. What's next?
The council may now vote on item 67, called special by Councilmember Hernandez, for which a many-motion has been introduced, Hernandez, without it to change the date.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now move on to item 72 for a verbal update.
All right, do we have representatives of the city attorney present? Does it need to be closed? All right, councilmember McCosker, this is your item 72. We can do it in an open session or closed session?
I think this is a closed-session item, please.
All right, with that, we'll go into closed session.
Thank you.
I'll ask the sergeants to prepare the room for closed session, so that is council members, staff, and staff of city electeds.
Following an executive order of our California Governor Newsom, Mayor Karen Bass has issued an emergency executive order to prohibit Senate Bill 9 within a very high-fire-hazard severity zone. Bass noted developers could have changed single-family lots into multiple residences, further challenging ingress and egress in the fire-damaged Palisades. According to Bass, Senate Bill 9 was not originally intended to be used in the rebuilding of a community decimated by the worst natural disaster L.A. has ever seen. Under this emergency executive order, the city of L.A. will not accept or process applications for projects within the Palisades fire area. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Community Investment for Families Department has partnered with councilmember Nithya Rahman to launch a new childcare toolkit. The Starting Strong Guide is designed to help in the process of beginning and growing childcare businesses and to give support to existing childcare operations. The Community Investment for Families Department reports that in the last decade, the city of L.A. has had a significant shortage in licensed childcare, with only 22% of children up to age 5 having licensed care. According to councilmember Rahman, this community investment in childcare providers will have an impact on future generations of Angelenos. For more information, visit communityinvestment.lacity.gov articals. In partnership with the Australian Government, the L.A. Zoo has received two Tasmanian devils named Danny Zuko and Crush. Tasmanian devils are indigenous only to Tasmania, an island-state of Australia where they are the top predator. According to L.A. Zoo, Tasmanian devils are marsupials with the strongest bite force relative to body size of any mammal. This is the first time in five years that the zoo has Tasmanian devils, and they can now be seen in the animals of Australia habitat. For more information, visit lazo.org. members, staff and staff of city electeds.
Following an executive order of our Cal forty governor Newsom, Mayor Karen Bass has issued an emergency executive order to prohibit Senate Bill Nine within a very high fire hazard severity zone. Bass noted developers could have changed single-family lots into multiple residences, further challenging ingress and egress in the fire-damaged Palisades. According to Bass, Senate Bill Nine was not originally intended to be used in the rebuilding of a community decimated by the worst natural disaster L.A. has ever seen. Under this emergency executive order, the city of L.A. will not accept or process applications for projects within the Palisades fire area. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Community Investment for Families Department has partnered with council member Nithya Ramen to launch a new childcare toolkit. The Starting Strong Guide is designed to help in the process of beginning and growing childcare businesses and to give support to existing childcare operations. The Community Investment for Families Department reports that in the last decade, the city of L.A. has had a significant shortage in licensed childcare, with only 22% of children up to age five having licensed care. According to council member Ramen, this community investment in childcare providers will have an impact on future generations of Angelenos. For more information, visit communityinvestment.lacity.gov/articles. In partnership with the Australian government, the L.A. Zoo has received two Tasmanian devils named Danny Zuko and Crush. Tasmanian devils are indigenous only to Tasmania, an island state of Australia where they are the top predator. According to L.A. Zoo, Tasmanian devils are marsupials with the strongest bite force relative to body size of any mammal. This is the first time in five years that the zoo has Tasmanian devils and they can now be seen in the animals of Australia habitat. For more information, visit lazo.org.
A recently scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAPD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spurting out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C, compress. If the injury is to the leg or arm, prepare to use the tourniquet. Unwrap the tourniquet and apply it two to three inches above the wound. Do not place the tourniquet onto a joint. Go above the joint if necessary. Pull the free end of the tourniquet and wrap it until it is tight. Wind the windlass until the bleeding stops. Secure the windlass in place. Note the time the tourniquet was applied and write it down, if you can, or tell first responders when they arrive.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment, a marriage between a calling and a lifestyle, a decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD, unrivaled since 1869.
The Lancashire Arts Center was constructed in 1939. When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a L.A. Department of Water and Power building. The city of L.A. became the owner of the Lancashire Arts Center when it was declared as a historical cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like five or six o'clock, there's like lighting panels that will turn on and then you get to see the full kind of marquee of the Lancashire Arts Center. We host a bevy of productions, be it dance productions, music productions. Sometimes we'll have a film screening. Art, I think that sort of flexibility is something that brings me back every time. The theater is very intimate here. It really feels like you're just right up in front of the talent when you come watch a show here. We also do youth programming here. We work with different local artists to be able to provide free programming for children to learn how to sew. We have a fashion class. We have music classes specifically for percussion and drums. We also have another music class for piano. And then we also have a dance studio. It's in our mezzanine. That is for our dance class that we have here. Our mission here is just to grow the performing arts, really. So whether it be someone trying to bring out their own original productions, or like sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes. Being able to grow the performing arts in a community is, is what makes Lancashire Arts Center stand out. The city investing into places like this is because it gives a place for people that were not as confident, the ability to express themselves, and give a space for people that are a little bit different, another space to play. Because being able to play is so important just for our mental health, as well as for like the health of the community. And it just makes the world a better place. We look forward to having you here at Lancashire Arts Center, whether it be taking part in our free programming, as well as being able to come and just watch a movie or watch a show. We look forward to having you over here. On Instagram, our Instagram handle is DCA underscore LNK. You can also find out more about us on culture.lacity.gov. That's our website.
The Tosco Theater is located in Canoga Park. There is so much already here to offer, cultural events, performances. Folks do annual Dia de los Muertos festivals. There is art walks. There is musical events. There's jazz. And I feel like we have the, the privilege to be added in that offering. The space had been left a little bit weary. And so when the city came in to renovate the space, it was offered another chance to breathe new life into the arts here. The Tosco Theater is here for everyone. It is here for young artists who are just starting out, to the professional artists who are here to dream up their new vision. And we're here for the community at large at all of our community events. One of our signature events is called Walking in Our Light. This idea of how we help people to, to encourage them, think about the light that they bring, and to show appreciation for those who helped to nurture that light. So from that idea, we thought, well, let's, let's walk in our light. Let us have stories along the way where people can stop and hear performances and storytelling of other people saying, this is my light, this is how I shine it, and these are the people I want to show appreciation to. So we, we do this walk around the block, and then we end up with a little gathering, performances inside, and lots of time to just reflect on, yeah, this is my light, you know? And, and these are the people who've helped me get there. Our communities don't always see what the city of Los Angeles provides them, providing access to the arts. Says to me, that's a city that's proud of the stories it wants to tell, the people who want to tell them, and the ways that they want to tell them. A space like this gives opportunity for folks of all ages. for folks of all ages, cultures, experience to say, "I can be seen. I can be heard. And I'm walking in these doors and it feels welcoming. It feels nurturing and people are excited to listen to me and to hear me." We don't have that all the time. So it's a live space that's here to welcome and nurture those sparks of inspiration and vision. There's a few ways to find us. We are always on social media, so we are on Instagram. We have a Facebook page. You can go to the Department of Cultural Affairs, their website. You'll find the Tosco Theater. It may take a few clicks here and there, but we try to stay present in any way that we can.
Angeles, L.A. sanitation and environment's team of solid resources workers are up with the sunrise to tackle the vital task of keeping L.A. clean and sustainable. Operating a fleet of over 700 collection trucks, L.A. SAN provides collection of approximately 2 million containers of trash, yard clippings, food waste, and recyclables per week. All these services are paid for by the solid resources fee, also known as the trash fee on your LADWP bill. But now, rising costs mean changes are needed. The city is proposing an increase to the solid resources fee, the first in 17 years. This adjustment is necessary to ensure that L.A. SAN can maintain reliable collection services and comply with updated environmental mandates.
These updated fees will help maintain weekly trash, recycling, and composting service, expand food waste and organic recycling, and ensure equity in services across all our neighborhoods.
And this fee covers more than just trash, like unlimited bulky item collection, safe centers for household hazardous waste, a 24/7 customer care center, and much more.
Everything we do is to help better our communities. We are all in this together, L.A. Let's help build a cleaner, greener city for everyone.
Because a cleaner L.A. isn't just a service, it's a promise. Financial assistance may be available to those in need. To see if you qualify, visit us using the links in the description below. For more information, visit us at lacitysan.org/srfrates2025 or contact our customer care center at san-srfrates2025@lacity.org or call 800-773-2489.
If it's summer, it must be the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. This year, the Independent Shakespeare Company also presents Marlowe's Dr. Faustus. In the play, a mysterious scholar wishes to master the dark arts and strikes a deal with the devil to make it happen. Dr. Faustus takes to the stage from Wednesday through Sunday, beginning on August 6th. Enjoy theater under the stars at the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival with Dr. Faustus, playing Wednesdays through Sundays at 7:00 p.m. from August the 6th until the 31st. Find out more at culture.lacity.gov/events. Join L.A.'s Public Library for a fun-filled afternoon of storytelling with pop culture author Charles Phoenix. Known as the king of retro, Phoenix is a mid-century pop culture expert, performer, and collector celebrating classic and kitschy American life and style. On Sunday, August 17th, Phoenix is bringing some of today's most vibrant historians together, including Foo-Houser, Merchant Motel, and the Hood Historian. Come and learn something new about the city you live in. Visit the Mark Tabor Auditorium at downtown L.A. Central Library for Charles Phoenix with special guests on Sunday, August 17th at 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. L.A. Sanitation and Environment presents a series of local workshops. And on Saturday, August 16th, they host home composting and urban gardening in the South L.A. wetlands. Learn how easy it is to compost at home. An L.A. sanitation green waste specialist will show you how to turn kitchen scraps and yard trimmings into nutrients for your soil. Register on Eventbrite for your spot, which includes a plant giveaway for each attendee. Head to the South L.A. Wetlands for home composting and urban gardening on Saturday, August 16th at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit sanitation.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Following an executive order by California Governor Newsom, Mayor Karen Bass has issued an emergency executive order to prohibit Senate Bill 9 within a very high fire hazard severity zone. Bass noted developers could have changed single-family lots into multiple residences, further challenging ingress and egress in the fire-damaged Palisades. According to Bass, Senate Bill 9 was not originally intended to be used in the rebuilding of a community decimated by the worst natural disaster L.A. has ever seen. Under this emergency executive order, the City of L.A. will not accept or process applications for projects within the Palisades fire area. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Community Investment for Families Department has partnered with Councilmember Nithya Raman to launch a new childcare toolkit. The Starting Strong Guide is designed to help in the process of beginning and growing childcare businesses and to give support to existing childcare operations. The Community Investment for Families Department reports that in the last decade, the City of L.A. has had a significant shortage in licensed childcare, with only 22% of children up to age 5 having licensed care. According to Councilmember Raman, this community investment in childcare providers will have an impact on future generations of Angelenos. For more information, visit communityinvestment.lacity.gov articals. In partnership with the Australian Government, the L.A. Zoo has received two Tasmanian devils named Danny Zuko and Crush. Tasmanian devils are indigenous only to Tasmania, an island state of Australia where they are the top predator. According to L.A. Zoo, Tasmanian devils are marsupials with the strongest bite force relative to body size of any mammal. This is the first time in five years that the zoo has Tasmanian devils, and they can now be seen in the animals of Australia habitat. For more information, visit lazoorg.
When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a L.A. Department of Water and Power building. The City of L.A. became the owner of the Lancashire Arts Center when it was declared as a historical-cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like 5 or 6 o'clock, there's like lighting panels that will turn on, and then you get to see the
The tourniquet and wrap it until it is tight. Wind the wine last until the bleeding stops. Secure the wine last in place. Note the time the tourniquet was applied and write it down if you can or tell first responders when they arrive.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment, a marriage between a calling and a lifestyle, a decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice, no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD, unrivaled since 1869.
The Lancashire Arts Center was constructed in 1939. When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a LA Department of Water and Power building. The city of LA became the owner of the Lancashire Arts Center when it was declared as a historical cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like five or six o'clock, there's like lighting panels that will turn on and then you get to see the full kind of marquee of the Lancashire Arts Center. We host a bevy of productions, be it dance productions, music productions. Sometimes we'll have a film screening. Art, I think that sort of flexibility is something that brings me back every time. The theater is very intimate here. It really feels like you're just right up in front of the talent when you come watch a show here. We also do youth programming here. We work with different local artists to be able to provide free programming for children to learn how to sew. We have a fashion class. We have music classes specifically for percussion and drums. We also have another music class for piano. And then we also have a dance studio. It's in our mezzanine. That is for our dance class that we have here. Our mission here is just to grow the performing arts, really. So whether it be someone trying to bring out their own original productions or like sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes. Being able to grow the performing arts in a community is what makes Lancashire Arts Center stand out. The city investing into places like this is because it gives a place for people that were not as confident, the ability to express themselves and give a space for people that are a little bit different. Another space to play because being able to play is so important just for our mental health as well as for like the health of the community. And it just makes the world a better place. We look forward to having you here at Lancashire Arts Center, whether it be taking part in our free programming as well as being able to come and just watch a movie or watch a show. We look forward to having you over here. On Instagram, our Instagram handle is DCA underscore L N K. You can also find out more about us on culture.lacity.gov. That's our website.
The Tosco Theater is located in Canoga Park. There is so much already here to offer, cultural events, performances. Folks do annual festivals, 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 festivals. There is art walks, there is musical events, there's jazz. And I feel like we have the privilege to be added in that offering. The space had been left a little bit weary. And so when the city came in to renovate the space, it was offered another chance to breathe new life into the arts here. The Tosco Theater is here for everyone. It is here for young artists who are just starting out, to the professional artists who are here to dream up their new vision. And we're here for the community at large at all of our community events. One of our signature events is called Walking in Our Light. This idea of how we help people to encourage them to think about the light that they bring and to show appreciation for those who helped to nurture that light. So from that idea, we thought, well, let's, let's walk in our light. Let us have stories along the way where people can stop and hear performances and storytelling of other people saying, this is my light, this is how I shine it, and these are the people I want to show appreciation to. So we do this walk around the block and then we end up with a little gathering, performances inside and lots of time to just reflect on, yeah, this is my light, you know? And these are the people who've helped me get there. Our communities don't always see what the city of Los Angeles provides them, providing access to the arts. It says to me, that's a city that's proud of the stories it wants to tell, the people who want to tell them, and the ways that they want to tell them. A space like this gives opportunity for folks of all ages, cultures, experience to say, I can be seen, I can be heard. And I'm walking in these doors and it feels welcoming, it feels nurturing, and people are excited to listen to me and to hear me. We don't have that all the time. So it's a, it's a live space that's here to welcome and nurture those sparks of inspiration and vision. There's a few ways to find us. We are always on social media, so we are on Instagram. We have a Facebook page. You can go to the Department of Cultural Affairs, their website, you'll find the Tosco Theater. It may take a few clicks here and there, but we try to stay present in any way that we can.
Angeles, LA Sanitation and Environment's team of Solid Resources workers are up with the sunrise to tackle the vital task of keeping LA clean and sustainable. Operating a fleet of over 700 collection trucks, LA SAN provides collection of approximately 2 million containers of trash, yard clippings, food waste, and recyclables per week. All these services are paid for by the Solid Resources fee, also known as the trash fee on your L A D W P bill. But now, rising costs mean changes are needed. The city is proposing an increase to the Solid Resources fee, the first in 17 years. This adjustment is necessary to ensure that LA SAN can maintain reliable collection services and comply with updated environmental mandates.
These updated fees will help maintain weekly trash, recycling, and composting service, expand food waste and organic recycling, and ensure equity and service across all our neighborhoods.
And this fee covers more than just trash, like unlimited bulky item collection, safe centers for household hazardous waste, a 24/7 customer care center, and much more.
Everything we do is to help better our communities. We are all in this together, LA. Let's help build a cleaner, greener city for everyone.
Because a cleaner LA isn't just a service, it's a promise. Financial assistance may be available to those in need. To see if you qualify, visit us using the links in the description below. For more information, visit us at lacitysan.org/srfrates2025 or contact our customer care center at san s r f rates 2025 at lacity.org or call 800-773-2489.
If it's summer, it must be the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. This year, the Independent Shakespeare Company also presents Marlowe's Dr. Faustus. In the play, a mysterious scholar wishes In the play, a mysterious scholar wishes to master the dark arts and strikes a deal with the devil to make it happen. Dr. Faustus takes to the stage from Wednesday through Sunday, beginning on August 6th. Enjoy theater under the stars at the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival with Dr. Faustus, playing Wednesdays through Sundays at 7:00 PM from August the 6th until the 31st. Find out more at culture.lacity.gov/events. Join LA's Public Library for a fun-filled afternoon of storytelling with pop culture author Charles Phoenix. Known as "The King of Retro," Phoenix is a mid-century pop culture expert, performer, and collector celebrating classic and kitschy American life and style. On Sunday, August 17th, Phoenix is bringing some of today's most vibrant historians together, including Foo-Hauser, Merchant Motel, and The Hood Historian. Come and learn something new about the city you live in. Visit the Mark Taper Auditorium at downtown LA Central Library for Charles Phoenix with special guests on Sunday, August 17th at 2:00 PM. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. L.A. Sanitation and Environment presents a series of local workshops, and on Saturday, August 16th, they host home composting and urban gardening in the South LA wetlands. Learn how easy it is to compost at home. An L.A. sanitation green waste specialist will show you how to turn kitchen scraps and yard trimmings into nutrients for your soil. Register on Eventbrite for your spot, which includes a plant giveaway for each attendee. Head to the South LA Wetlands for home composting and urban gardening on Saturday, August 16th at 9:00 AM. For more information, visit sanitation.lacity.gov. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Following an executive order by California Governor Newsom, Mayor Karen Bass has issued an emergency executive order to prohibit Senate Bill 9 within a very high fire hazard severity zone. Bass noted developers could have changed single-family lots into multiple residences, further challenging ingress and egress in the fire-damaged Palisades. According to Bass, Senate Bill 9 was not originally intended to be used in the rebuilding of a community decimated by the worst natural disaster LA has ever seen. Under this emergency executive order, the city of LA will not accept or process applications for projects within the Palisades' fire area. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. The Community Investment for Families Department has partnered with Councilmember Nithia Ramen to launch a new childcare toolkit. The Starting Strong Guide is designed to help in the process of beginning and growing childcare businesses and to give support to existing childcare operations. The Community Investment for Families Department reports that in the last decade, the city of LA has had a significant shortage in licensed childcare, with only 22% of children up to age 5 having licensed care. According to Councilmember Ramen, this community investment in childcare providers will have an impact on future generations of Angelenos. For more information, visit communityinvestment.lacity.gov articals. In partnership with the Australian Government, the LA Zoo has received two Tasmanian devils named Danny Zuko and Crush. Tasmanian devils are indigenous only to Tasmania, an island state of Australia where they are the top predator. According to LA Zoo, Tasmanian devils are marsupials with the strongest bite force relative to body size of any mammal. This is the first time in five years that the zoo has Tasmanian devils, and they can now be seen in the animals of Australia habitat. For more information, visit lazoo.org.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, can you summarize what we did in closed session?
And if I may say...
Oh, we've got to call the roll, my bad.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bloomingfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Hurado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramen, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavsky, 13 members, the president and the court, Mr. President.
So, Mr. President, as the agenda says, the closed session was for a verbal update only, and no action was taken enclosed, and no action could be taken in open session. Therefore, there is nothing to report out of closed session at this time, Mr. President.
All right, what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on Items 10, which is to receive and file the lien, and Items 27 and 28, for which motion McCosker, Harris, Dawson has been introduced to waive the interest and late penalty fees.
All right, those items are now before us, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now vote on Items 55 through 66, and 68 through 71.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and they are referred. Announcements, Members, Councilmember Hernandez.
Can we move Item 71 forthwith, please?
Without objection.
Thank you.
Any other announcements, Members? Councilmember Hurado.
I will need two more minutes, I'm sorry.
Any other announcements, Members? Councilmember McCosker.
I have an announcement. I know that Liberation Day is going to be mostly celebrated in Koreatown, as well it should, but for those of us who are not in city council on Friday at 11:00 AM, I invite everyone to the beautiful Korean Friendship Bell in San Pedro, where at 11 o'clock, there will be a ceremony with our local community, our local Korean leaders, to celebrate Liberation Day for the Republic of Korea. And I do want to say that we've renamed the bell, One Big Beautiful Bell. Too soon? Too soon.
Way too soon.
Okay.
Councilmember Soto Martinez? Oh, you know, okay. Councilmember Hurado? You ready? Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, this past weekend, Councilmember Isabel Hurado and I hosted a backpack giveaway in Lincoln Heights. It was a phenomenal event, where we had over 35 resources and organizations providing those resources. We had CIFD providing helmets and car seats. We had free haircuts. We gave out over 1,400 backpacks with school supplies. And we had magicians, we had musicians, and our peace ambassadors there. It is just a beautiful example of collaborating between districts and helping multiple neighborhoods at once, and I can't wait to do it again for the holiday season. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hurado.
Yes, thank you so much to my council colleagues for the collaboration and announcements. Before we adjourn today's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank three incredible interns who brought their talent, commitment, and drive to CD14 this summer. Yes, clap for them. Kathy, Kyle, and Rania. Come closer. They brought to life what this work is all about, building something better for the people of Los Angeles. Kathy is a master student in urban planning and regional planning at UCLA, concentrating on housing. Her passion for equitable development and clear-eyed insight made Kathy an invaluable part of the team. Kyle just graduated from USC with a degree in public policy, and now he's headed to law school this fall. Boo, but he'll be a great judge, he said. His creativity, sharp thinking, and quick wit made him a go-to in the office. Rania is a recent graduate of Bishop Alamaney High School, and will be starting at Columbia University this fall. We lost her to New York, everybody. She's quick on her feet, curious as can be, and always eager to dive into whatever challenge comes her way, and a proud CD12 resident. She's getting her water back. Kathy, Kyle, Rania, thank you for choosing public service, for bringing your talents to CD14. We're excited to see what you do next. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we present you with this certificate, so thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you so much. Any other announcements, Members? Councilmember Padilla.
I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow, LAUSD kids are back at school. I hope all of you receive the invitation to adopt the campus by our friends over at UTLA. I know I will be making it to two. Hopefully, you, your staff, and leaders in your community are there to support the campuses as well. Thank you.
All right, any other announcements, Members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions and ask Members if they have adjourning motions. I see Mr. Lee. We'll start with Council District 12.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I rise to adjourn in the memory of Charles Johnson, a devoted public servant, a United States Navy veteran, and a beloved member of our Los Angeles City community. Charles was born on April 26, 1944, here in Los Angeles, the youngest of six children born to Joseph and Ethel Johnson. He attended Hobart Elementary, Berendow Junior High, and graduated from Manual Arts High School. In 1962, at just 18 years old, Charles enlisted in the United States Navy, serving his country with honor until 1968. And then, not long after that, he joined the Los Angeles Police Department on August 10, 1970. Charles began his LAPD career in Central Division, working in the narcotics buy program, and later served in Newton Division. Within three years, he rose to Police Officer III. Driven by a passion for traffic enforcement and motorcycle work, he completed motor officer school in 1978 and joined South Traffic Division, a role that he loved. Over his distinguished career, Charles earned the respect of colleagues and the trust of the community. He promoted to Sergeant in '93, serving in the 77th Division, West Traffic, and ultimately returning to South Traffic Division, where he remained until his retirement in 2008, closing out an extraordinary 37 years and nine months of service. More than his titles or assignments, Charles was known for his friendships that he built over the years. Many of those bonds forged on the job lasted a lifetime. On the morning of August 1, 2025, Charles Johnson passed away peacefully. He leaves behind his children Kevin and Adrian, and their families, his grandchildren and great-grandchildren, his brothers Joseph and Harold, and a large extended family of nieces, nephews, and lifelong friends. Charles Johnson lived a life of service, first to his country, then to his city, and always to the people around him. May his memory be a blessing, and may we honor his legacy through our own commitment to service and community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lee, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other adjourning motions? Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. As we adjourn, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and honor the life and memory of former Ambassador...